Good evening. Today is Tuesday, April 21st, 2020. I'm Heather Pethley, Clerk for the City of Manistee. The City Council's April 21st, 2020 regular meeting, being conducted remotely where all members of the City Council are in separate locations and not at the City Hall Council chambers, will be called to order by Mayor Roger Zelinski shortly. As always, this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast on Manistee TV cable channels 189 and 190, and also available at manistetv.org. There will be no video associated with this meeting, solely audio. The reason for this is projecting video through Zoom sometimes causes a delay, which makes communication in this scenario difficult and awkward. In just a moment, we will start individually unmuting the microphones of each member of the City Council, the City Manager, and the City Attorney. We are unmuting them individually to make sure there is no disruptive audio feedback coming from each of them. Doing so individually allows us to easily identify the source of any disruptive audio issues. Finance Director Ed Bradford is assisting me with this meeting, and you may hear his voice if we have an issue that requires his assistance. The microphones of all members of the City Council, the City Manager, City Attorney, and City Clerk will always be live unless there is an audio disruption. I will now begin to unmute and check each microphone that will be live during the meeting. Councilmember Beaton, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Councilmember Sipsick, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Councilmember Cooper, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Councilmember Shemansky, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Mayor Protem Grabowski, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Mayor Zelinski, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
George Saylor, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
As a reminder, councilmembers, please clearly state your name before speaking or make an emotion or a second. Roll call will be taken as usual. Now that activating the microphones is complete, Mayor Roger Zelinski will call the meeting to order and will share some additional information as needed about this meeting, and likely council meetings for the foreseeable future will be conducted. Mayor Zelinski, we are ready to proceed with the meeting. Did I lose him?
It looks like he dropped off, Heather. He'll have to call back in.
Okay.
Heather, this is Thad. You forgot to call on me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Thad.
So obviously, I can't hear.
You can hear, and I now have you unmuted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, life happens.
Okay, we've lost the mayor, so... Just hang tight for one moment. Mayor, can you hear me?
Can you hear me now? I got disconnected, Heather.
Okay, we've got you now.
Okay, where are we at?
We are at roll... We're ready to call the meeting to order.
Okay. I'll call the meeting to order. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Mayor Zelinski.
Here.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Here.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Here.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Here.
City Manager.
Here.
City Attorney.
Here.
DPW Director.
Here.
Finance Director.
Here.
Public Safety Director.
Here.
City Engineer.
Here.
Roll call complete.
Thank you. Public hearings. All individuals attending the virtual waiting... Waiting in the virtual waiting room with their microphones muted. When it comes time for the public hearing, each person waiting in the virtual waiting room will be called individually by the City Clerk by the last four digits of their telephone number. Individuals will be asked if they have comments on the 2020-2021 budget or capital improvement plan, or if they are passing. It's very important that those giving comments have good phone connections and no sound or noise whatsoever in the background. Examples would be television, or all forms of audio should be muted. Otherwise, there will be a disruptive audio. If the issue could not be corrected by the callers, we will move on to the next person in line. Please be aware of those calling that when they first call in, the full telephone number may be visible for a period of time on the recording. Although, we will work quickly to alter what displays so that just the last four digits of your telephone number shows. Excuse me. Public hearings on the 2020-2021 budget and capital improvement plan. The city physical year runs from July 1st to June 30th under Section 7-4 of the Charter. A public hearing is required on the budget, which must be adopted not later than May 15th of each year. The work session was held on Tuesday, April 14th, and a budget work session is scheduled for later this evening. An optional work session is scheduled for Tuesday, April 28th. The budget calendar anticipates adoption of the budget at the May 6th, 2020 meeting. At this time, the public has an opportunity to comment on the 2020-2021 budget and capital improvement plan. No action is anticipated at the conclusion of this public hearing. The City Clerk will now take over and accept public comments on the 2020-2021 budget and capital improvement plan. Heather?
Okay, thank you. Number 4551, do you have a comment?
Passed.
Passed, thank you. Number 3345, do you have a comment?
Yes.
Okay. Please state your name and address.
My name is Suzie Cooper. I'm at 267 Second Avenue. I have several questions. The first one, when I read the document, I was unclear of how much was allocated for the Blight Committee. Can that be answered now?
I believe this is a time for comments. We can get a good answer to that during the budget time.
Okay, I will wait for that then. My comment would be that I was very disappointed at some of the responses from the City Manager. I would like to see more detail, and I would like to see facts and money as far as the twice-a-year pickup. And I would also like to see money and facts that if I only saw $15,000 for an officer, that that would not quite complete. And I would also like to see in another meeting what the task and what the plans are. And the last comment that I have is I want to know when the City Attorney will complete the ordinance that was sent to him for approval and to be rewritten so the officers could do their jobs.
Thank you. Public number 4004.
Yes.
Please state your name and address.
Douglas Vansicle, 504 Seventh Street.
Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I am a born and raised community member and have two children at home. Most of you know me. For some that do not, I am a police officer with the Manistee City Police Department. I would like to address the council and ask that all council members support hiring a police officer for the vacant position. Last year, the position was budgeted but never filled. This year, the budget cuts this position. Last year, the city police officers were dispatched to just under 6,000 calls for service. Every year, the calls for service are more than the previous years. For the past two years, the City Police Department had more calls for service than the Sheriff's Department. The City of Manistee has 12 police officers. Two of those officers do not take calls for service. So the reality of the police officers that we have is 10, and we are full staff, meaning that someone is not out sick or injured. In 2019, the scent, or drug team officer, was recalled when vacant officers' position was not filled. Many people in our community do not realize how bad the City of Manistee has become with drug-related issues. A lot of crime comes from drug usage. Drug overdoses are rising fast. There have been several overdose overdoses since January 2020, some resulting in death. Criminal sexual assault complaints were also in an all-time high last year. These types of complaints are very time-consuming. They can be investigated for weeks, months, or even years. I agree with the councilmembers when we talk about blight. This community is full of blight. I share the same passion about our community not turning into a junkyard. Blight alone is very time-consuming. There are many things that need to happen in order to fix our blight problems. First is to educate people. Second is to issue a warning. Third is enforcement, which includes several weeks of posting and sending letters via email certified. Fourth is a court stage. This can take weeks to get a court date. Again, blight is very time-consuming and requires a lot of manpower. Let's talk further about blight. The city has proposed to split our city up into eight sections and assign officers to each section. Now remember, the reality of the police officers working the road is 10. Four out of those 10 work the night shift. They start from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. The highest calls for service for the night shift is between 7:00 PM and 3:00 AM. So this takes us down to six officers available to work blight in addition to their regular job duties. This past weekend, I counted blight in the city. We are over 120 blighted properties for the city. Since 2004, each city employee... Or I'm sorry, since 2004, the city employee went from 65 full-time employees to 54.5. We should be promoting jobs in our community, not cutting them. Councilmembers, I ask you this. How are we, as a police department, going to be able to maintain the same service level to our community with less officers? The answer is we cannot. We need our police department to be proactive, not reactive, to better serve the community. Councilmembers, I thank you for your time, and I hope I have your support.
Number 3457, do you have a comment? Hello? Number 3457, do you have a comment? Number 4150, do you have a comment?
No.
Thank you. Number 4842, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address.
Robert Goodspeech, 301 Cypress Street, Manistee, Michigan.
Go ahead.
I am here to talk about two things in the budget. One being, I don't think it's a good idea to close the teen center. For cost-effective reasons, it's $13,000 for appropriations. I believe there's more than just a few kids that use that. That's the first one. The second one, more importantly, is the 13th police officer. We need to hire a 13th police officer. I wish the council to take this into real consideration. It's a... We agreed in 2014 and 2015's budget to keep the mileage at 4.4622 to keep the 13th police officer... Hire the 13th police officer. Since Jeff Pethley has left two years ago, we have not filled that position. It's a public safety issue. And it's an officer safety issue. Thank you.
Number 8677, do you have a comment?
No.
Thank you. Number 6814, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address.
Sheila Kaminsky, 228 Third Avenue. I would like to comment on the budget. The Alternatives for Area Youth runs the teen center, and we received a letter from the City Manager that he was going to recommend unfunding the teen center. I just wanted to express my concern and let you know that there's more than just a few kids that use it. The proximity of the building being where it is, we get kids right after school until about dinnertime. It's a perfect time for us to help them with their work or watch them while they socialize and keep them as much out of trouble as we can. That's what we try to do there. Teach them how to act in public. I'm sorry we didn't have any ice skating this year. It has happened before that we haven't had ice skating, but between nature and manpower, we just couldn't pull it off. The teen center offers shelter and restrooms and concessions for sand parks. And through our cooperative effort with the city, that service to the community is priceless. The spirit of that building was raised by the community, and the skate park was raised by the community. So I just wanted to put that out there before anybody made any decisions about whether we were going to get funded or not. It would be a shame if we did not. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Is this a member of the public? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, there we go. Do you have a comment?
No.
Okay, thank you. Number 6739, do you have a comment?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Ed, did I get everybody? I think I missed one.
Hello?
Number 5404?
Yes.
Do you have a comment?
Yes, I do, about the budget.
Okay, go ahead. Please state your name and address.
Lyndega Maschek, 345 Fourth Avenue. I am also the president of the Board of the Teen Center. I'm hoping the council will consider renewing our appropriation for this fiscal year. Remember, it's your job to take care of not only the adults and the seniors that live in this community, but also the youth. The building has stood there for almost 30 years and represents the residents and their families' commitment to the city as it was a community build. The building and the grounds are used all year long. Without that building and its services, they will have no place to call their own. That appropriation is only a small part of the city budget. Please reexamine your budget and make the appropriate changes. Don't forget the youth that live here. They will grow up and they will run the city one day. Make it something for them to be proud of. It's not always about the money. Thank you.
Number 3345, did you have a comment?
I've already commented, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we are... I think I've got everybody.
Okay, if we have nobody else, we'll close the public hearing and move on to the rest of the agenda. We're moving on to citizens' comments on agenda-related items. Following the same instructions for public comments from the public hearing, we will now take public comments on agenda items. Every person waiting in the virtual waiting room will be called by the last four digits of their telephone number. The agenda topics for those who do not have an agenda are: Approval of Minutes, Payroll, Invoices, Notification Regarding Next Work Session, Consideration of Approval of Invoices and Draw Request #3 from USDA Rural Development Wastewater Improvement Phase 1. Other agenda items are: Consideration of 911 Board Authority Appointment, Budget Work Session immediately following the regular meeting. The City Clerk will now take over and accept public comments on agenda-related items.
Number 3345, do you have any comments?
No, thank you.
Number 3457, do you have any comments? Number 3457, do you have a comment? Number 4150, do you have a comment?
No, ma'am.
Number 4551, do you have a comment? Number 4004, do you have a comment?
No, ma'am.
Number 4842, do you have a comment?
I do not, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Number 5404, do you have a comment?
No, thank you.
Number 6739, do you have a comment?
No, thank you.
Number 6814, do you have a comment?
Not at this time, thank you.
And number 8677, do you have a comment?
No, thank you.
Heather?
Yes?
I believe there's one up at the top that I wasn't able to get a number. It's ZPublicGalaxy, Tab A.
Oh, thank you. Good evening. Do you have a public... Yes?
It says I heard that I was unmuted. I don't think you meant to unmute me.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening. There's an iPad, Tab A. Do you have a comment?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that's everything.
Thank you. Consent Agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the City Manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent Agenda items include: Approval of Minutes, Payroll, Invoices, Notification Regarding Next Work Session, Consideration of Approval of Invoice and Draw Request #3 for USDA Rural Development Wastewater Improvement Phase 1. At this time, council can take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Councilmembers, please remember to state your name before making a motion or a second. Is there a motion?
Cooper, motion.
I'm making a motion, Jim Gubaski.
Do I have a second?
Cooper, second.
Have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac. Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Heather, it looks like she might have dropped off.
Okay. Let me just see if she'll come back on real quick. Otherwise, we can proceed. I don't see that she's calling back in. So, Mayor, would you like me to proceed?
Proceed.
Okay, that motion was approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration of 911 Board Authority Appointment. The City of Manistee has a seat on the Manistee County 911 Board Authority. With the Department of Public Safety Director, Tim Kozel, there is a vacancy. With his departure, there's a vacancy. It is staff recommendation that Detective Sergeant Josh Glass be appointed to fill the vacancy and request the City of Manistee Police Department. Moral appointment is needed to fill this vacancy. I would like to appoint Josh Glass to the 911 Board. Is there... Do I have support? Do I have support?
This is Councilmember Beaton. You have support.
Jim Gubaski, second.
I have support and second. Is there any discussion on this appointment? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Oh, hold on one second. I just got an email from Erin that she can... an email from Erin that she can hear me. She is here. We don't see her. Okay. George, can I take her vote? She cannot maintain a call. She's on, she's emailing me.
I don't think you can, Heather.
Okay. Should I tell her? I'll see if she can hang up and call back in.
That's what should happen, Heather.
Okay. Give me one second, please. Ed, if you see her come back in, will you admit her while I finish taking roll?
Yeah, yeah, I will.
Thanks. Okay, I'm gonna start rollover, sorry. Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick?
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski?
Yes.
And she just texted she's calling back in, so I'll give one moment for Erin to rejoin the meeting. I'm thinking that she might be having some difficulties because I'm not seeing it come back through. Oh, there she is. Councilmember Martin Poniac, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, were you able to hear the item?
Uh, not the last part, but I heard everything else. I don't know why you guys couldn't hear me. But we'll try it again.
Do you want to vote on this item, on this issue? For the 911 Board Authority?
Oh, yes.
Yes?
Yes, my vote is yes.
Okay, motion approved.
Thank you. Concerns and comments. Citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Each person waiting in the virtual waiting room will be called by the last four digits of their telephone number. City Clerk?
Okay. Public iPad, do you have a comment?
No comment.
3345, do you have a comment?
No, thank you.
Number 4150, do you have a comment?
No, thank you.
Number 4551, do you have a comment?
No comment.
Number 4004, do you have a comment?
No, ma'am.
Number 4842, do you have a comment?
I again would like to tonight discuss having another, the 13th police officer charge. That's all the thing I have.
And this was?
Good speed.
Okay, thank you. I lost my place. Okay. Number 5404, do you have a comment?
No, thank you.
Number 6739, do you have a comment?
No, thank you.
Number 6814, do you have a comment?
I do not. Thank you.
Number 8677, do you have a comment?
No, thank you.
Heather, you've unmuted me again. Thank you.
I know. It keeps switching on me.
It's okay.
Okay, that's everybody.
Thank you. You want to go on to officials and staff?
Okay. Mr. Taylor, do you have a comment?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Sailor, do you have a comment?
Nothing, Heather. Thank you.
Mr. Bradford, do you have a comment?
No, thank you.
Chief Kozel? Chief Kozel, do you have a comment?
Heather, just want to thank you for everything you're doing with us. You're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you. Jeff McCula, DPW Director, do you have a comment?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. City Engineer, do you have a comment?
Uh, nothing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's everybody for officials and staff, Mayor.
You want to do the council members? Or do you want me to?
I can do them if you'd like me to.
Go ahead.
Uh, Councilmember Cooper?
No comment.
I'm just gonna go through my list here, so I may be out of order. Councilmember Shemansky?
Um, I would just like to thank all of our 501Cs for all the work that all of our charities have been doing to support our community during the pandemic. And just shout out to all of the good work being done by a lot of people in the community.
Mayor Protem Grabowski?
Well, a lot of my comments are addressed when we get into the budgets. That's what I'm doing with this thing.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Beaton?
Not at this time.
Councilmember Martin Poniac? Councilmember Martin Poniac? Nothing. Mayor Zalinski?
Yes, I just want to thank everybody in the community for practicing this, the social distancing, doing their part in keeping us all safe. A little concerning on the news tonight, I see there is an uptick in northern Michigan. We're starting to see a few more cases of the coronavirus. I encourage everybody, I know it's tough. I myself, I'm getting very bored. But we need to continue to look out after each other and practice all the safety things that we feel help stop the spread of this coronavirus. I thank the whole community to look after each other. We'll get through this together. Thank you.
I think I got everyone. Did I miss anybody?
Okay. I will take a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion?
Grabowski, I'll make the motion.
I have a motion to adjourn. We're going to adjourn right into the budget work session. The council work session is on the proposed fiscal year 2020-2021 budget. And the capital improvement plan has been scheduled, and we're gonna hold that now. Um, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Bradford?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Just want to remind council that the budget, the proposed budget is balanced without the use of fund balance. That said, you know, there are a lot of unknowns as we move forward, primarily in the revenues. Chief Financial Officer Bradford and I attended a webinar that was put on by the Department of Treasury. And it was pretty eye-opening. They're forecasting the state will have a $2.6 billion deficit in the current fiscal year, which that's only five more months. In their next fiscal year that would start October 1st, they're projecting a $3.2 billion deficit. And the deficits, those deficits are just in the school aid and general fund revenues. Currently, the state has about $1.2 billion in their rainy day fund, and it clearly won't cover their estimated deficit. So really, the magnitude of the revenue decrease at the state level, you just can't understate that. And that has effects on not just the City of Manistee, but all local municipalities across the state. I think without a doubt, the state will decrease statutory revenue sharing and also constitutional revenue sharing will be impacted by the reduction in tax revenues. During that same webinar, they said that the April and May sales tax revenues are estimated to be 50% lower compared to the same time last year. The same outlook holds true for the fuel tax, which supports Act 51, and that's how municipalities get funds for their streets. They're estimating that to be 50% lower compared to the same time last year. This morning, we held a virtual meeting with our department directors, and we discussed cuts that they can make in the proposed budget to offset the decre, anticipated decrease in state revenue sharing. I have asked them to provide me with their recommendations on their budgets where they can make cuts as we react to the loss of revenue sharing. And we're asking them to look at it from anywhere between 5 and 30%. What we discussed amongst the department directors this morning is that it's not gonna take much of a cut to our budget before it impacts personnel. And we think we'll see, if we go cuts much above 10 to 15%, we're gonna have to reduce employee count. So they're, to get me those, their thoughts by the end of the week. We're also, we're looking at everything in the budget. We're reexamining our appropriations. But unfortunately, you know, we can work and we can try to be prepared to react to the state revenue shortfall, but we're gonna need a month or two before I think we know what the ramifications are going forward. Uh, I do know that the states and the governors are lobbying the federal government for $500 billion to offset loss of revenues and the increased costs associated with the response to the coronavirus. But obviously, nothing's certain. And even if they get that money, there's no certainty that it would come down to the locals. So, in summary, we need to be extremely cautious with our budget for next fiscal year. There's, I think the one thing that we know for certain is that we can expect a loss of revenue from the state either in fuel tax, statutory revenue sharing, or constitutional revenue sharing for a couple of reasons. They're all tied to the taxes that they receive, primarily sales tax. As you know, people are laid off from work. They're not working. They don't have money to spend. The travel has been significantly reduced. They're not buying as much gas as normal. All those have an impact. Additionally, the state has a history of when they're faced with budget deficits, they pass a lot of that on to the local units of government. And as I mentioned last meeting, that since 2001, the state has withheld collectively about $8.5 billion in revenue sharing to local communities across the state. So, if they're gonna be, in my mind, if they're gonna be suffering some pressures on their budgets, they're gonna look for themselves first and then worry about the locals at some point. So we need to be very, very cautious, and that's what we've told our department directors. We continually remind them to, in this year's budget, not to buy anything unless it's absolutely necessary. And we're also looking at, we want to be prepared to provide recommendations to council on amending our next year's budget as more information becomes available. So while currently, the proposed budget is very realistic in terms of what we saw and what we were working with when the budget was developed, it was realistic, not so realistic now in all likelihood. But it is currently balanced, and we're not using any fund balance. Those are my comments. I'd like the Chief Financial Officer Bradford to offer his comments at this time.
Yes, thank you, Sad. I would just echo that the magnitude of the revenue cut, the revenue reduction that the state's anticipating far exceed those of the Great Recession in 2008 by several factors. And so this really is unprecedented territory for all government and for citizens alike, private business. You know, we're really plowing new ground here. But I guess the thing to keep in mind is, you know, the department heads are gonna be looking, as Sad mentioned, at their budgets to see what they can reduce or cut out to try to kind of weather the storm over the next 12 to 18 months until things can get turned around. And we will be able to do that to a degree, because you can always defer maintenance or put off travel and training, or, you know, try to be more frugal in a certain area. But at the end of the day, the city provides services, and the city provides services with people. And that's what we buy. We buy labor and we pay employee benefits primarily, at least in the general fund. So there's gonna be real challenges if our revenue from state share revenue is reduced to a significant degree. Not to mention that the personal property tax reimbursement that we've been getting a bonus windfall on, so we're normally entitled to about $110,000, $112,000. We've been getting more than double that because of the way the legislature wrote the statute. It's very likely that that's gonna be reduced as well, which is another hit to our revenue, and that goes to the general fund. There was talk about the legislature changing that statutory allocation at the end of the Snyder administration. It didn't happen. But I have no doubt that the legislature is not gonna leave any stone unturned to try to be able to balance their ledger, because by the Constitution, the state cannot run a deficit. And the longer they put off making those adjustments on the state budget, the tougher it's gonna be. They only have five months left in this fiscal year to be able to do that. So, I think the manager's approach of being very prudent and kind of reacting as we go along is probably the best we can do at this point until more information becomes available. On the street side, I want to just make a few comments about the revenue there. So, back in 2014, when the legislature and the governor made some changes to the way that we're getting funded, they raised gas taxes, and they also started to allocate general fund monies to the street fund. Our major street revenue from the state, from all sources, has gone from $395,000. We're projecting about $676,000 this fiscal year. There's no doubt that those numbers are gonna be reduced, not only because of the reduction in the gas tax revenues, but I have no doubt that the legislature is likely to cut some or all of the general fund appropriation or general fund contribution that was being passed through to the locals. So that puts additional pressure on our street funds as well. And fortunately, we look out a number of years and And fortunately, we look out a number of years and kind of schedule our cash flows accordingly. So we should be okay for 2021, but there may need to be some adjustments made in future years, depending on how long it takes to get back up to where our funding level is. The problem with that is, we try to match those street projects up with utility work underneath. So it's kind of some dominoes that tend to tumble if one thing falls. But we'll have to be monitoring that closely to make sure that the projects that we have planned, you know, we can either do or possibly postpone until the revenue situation becomes clear. So that's a big concern. In general, I think our fund balance, where it's at, is strong, but it's taken us a number of years to get there. Back in 2008 and '09, we were down to about $725,000. And we slowly built that over the last decade up to the current, you know, 1.28, 1.3, where we're projecting it'll be at the end of this fiscal year. And the purpose of that fund balance is threefold. One, it generates interest income when interest rates are good. Two, it serves as somewhat of a buffer for natural disasters. We saw that when we had the heavy rains and the end of 12th Street eroded. And the other thing we use it for is for unforeseen circumstances, such as this pandemic, that are really going to cut into our revenues. So it is there to a degree to be able to support current operations. In times like this, though, where it's very likely that we have to reduce headcount potentially or temporarily, I'm not sure that, you know, adding headcount at this time is the prudent thing to do, even though it may be the right thing to do in the long term because of the number of uncertainties that are out there. So those would be my comments.
Thank you. Council members, have any comments?
I do. This is Councilmember Beaton. Hello?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to back to the last meeting that we had, which was a work session. And I have to tell you that I walked away from that feeling very discouraged. And I will tell you why. And here's an old expression you may have heard. Does the dog wag the tail, does the tail wag the dog? And I'm not trying to be sarcastic in any way, but I think it's really important for city management to understand that there are seven elected officials in front of you, or virtually in front of you, who represent different areas of the city and take many telephone calls from citizens. I do not believe that this budget is something that I can fully support. In 2014 and 2015, we raised property taxes in the city by .4622 to generate approximately $82,000 to support the hiring of a 13th police officer. We don't have that now. And I think, when I look back over the management years that I spent at a big corporation, I recognize that you can throw a lot of money at people, but if they're not happy with their job because they're overworked or stressed out, they're going to walk away. And I don't want that to happen to any of our police officers. I think we need to hire another officer. And I'm a little bit unhappy, well, I'm very unhappy. I'm just kind of mad that we have a mileage that is .4622 primarily set for the hiring of a 13th officer that we haven't been able to fulfill. So we did it for a while, and then we sort of lost track of it in 2018. We need to get back at that and to fix that. Those are my comments for now. Thank you.
You're welcome. I just have a comment, maybe a suggestion or thought process or thought would be, maybe we should consider reducing the mileage. Just a thought. Anybody else?
Yes, this is Grubowski. I think going back a year and a half, I asked for the same thing of another police officer. When Mr. Pethly quit, we put the money from his, the rest of his money from that year into the budget. And I noticed in the budget that it's just all incorporated. And I've been asking for a police officer for a long time. And I think we should have enough in that budget. There's other areas we can cut, I'm sure. That we need protection for the people, plus officers need release. Thank you.
I make a comment there that I'm not against hiring a police officer. I just think it's not the right, this is not the right time to do it. I think we need to have some reassurance that we're not going to be laying people off. I have some concerns about taxes. Where collect taxes? We haven't got the money yet to pay for the budget that we're talking about tonight. We are depending on taxes that we collect to pay for that. With people in the dire straits that they're in now, are they going to be able to pay taxes? Now, I understand that the county will reimburse us. After a year, they'll reimburse us. Or give us money for the taxes that are uncollected, and they take it over. But what I'm unable to find out is, how much money do they have in that fund? Do they do it for the townships? They don't, I don't think that fund is unlimited, and they can just do it across the board for no matter who don't pay their taxes. I don't think the city's going to be made whole 100%. So those are some concerns that I have. Again, I'm not against hiring a police officer. I'm against the timing. I don't want to be hiring somebody and then have to lay people off. That's just my comment. Anybody else?
Oh, yes. This is Grubowski again. A year ago, when I asked for that, I was just pushed aside and not even given an answer. I think that we could have had an officer on board by this time, and we wouldn't have these problems we got with negotiations and everything else. I've asked for how much we paid this attorney. I've asked for how much money was involved with negotiating. And I did get some of the stuff from the attorney. And then we went into the papers, gave me the results of what the police got. I want to know what the manager, the police chief, and Mr. Bradford, what their wages were for all this time of negotiating. I got all the hours from the attorney. Now I'd like their hours to show what went into this negotiation. Thank you.
Mr. Taylor, do you have a response to that?
Well, we didn't, you know, to my knowledge, we have not tracked the number of hours that either myself or Public Safety Director Kozel or Chief Financial Officer Bradford spent. I mean, we can't, I don't know if we could go back and recreate that. My point is, is that we're on salary, and we work the hours that we need to work to get the job done. And that's just the way it is. We get paid, we get paid a salary, and whatever hours we have to work, we work to get the job done. So that's why I've never, have never been concerned about how many hours necessarily that we're involved in negotiations. That's part of the job.
So what you're saying is you're not getting paid overtime or anything like that to increase the cost?
No, not at all.
Mayor Zelensky, I have another comment in regards to that.
Sure.
I raised this issue last week. In my mind, most of the people that work on processing the applications for the marijuana licenses are on salary. And you're right, that's part of their job. Some parts of the year are going to be busier than others. But I do think those $5,000 for license that we got, that should be allocated more toward police, law enforcement. I'm very disappointed that I got pushed back on that. Again, I don't know what the rest of the council members think about this issue. I don't know whether they think that we need a 13th officer. But at some point in this discussion, we need to have a consensus as to whether we need to investigate that if we want to change the budget. Thank you.
Anybody else have some comments?
I have a comment. This is Shemansky. It's never going to be a perfect time to hire another officer. And there's always going to be an excuse of why we can't hire another officer. But especially with these times going on, the safety of the residents of Manistee and especially our street officers is extremely important. So I think that if we need to hire another officer and cut somebody somewhere else, then that needs to be done.
This is Councilwoman Cooper. I'd like to make a motion that we hire another police officer.
We can't make motions on a work session.
Yeah, I-
It's a meeting.
Yeah, we can't make motions on a work session. We can discuss it, but we can't make motions.
So it's a meeting work session?
Yeah, it's a work session, and you would like, what you're saying is that you would like to hire another police officer.
Yes.
Mayor, if I could interrupt, this is Thad.
Sure.
You know, certainly the council can express their thoughts on hiring. The hiring is done by the city manager. And you know, you can recommend that we hire, and I certainly can take that under consideration and see if we can work it into the budget. But the hiring, with the exception of the city attorney and the clerk, is under the purview of the manager by charter.
Well, I guess my answer to that, with all due respect, Mr. Taylor, is that you work for the city council, and you are under us. And if we have a lot of city council members who feel that we need to take a look at the budget with hiring a 13th officer, I would think that you would like to accommodate us.
That's why I said that the, that what I made that statement was, you know, you can make that recommendation.
Mr. Taylor- Go ahead, finish.
No, that's fine.
This is- Yeah, this is Nick Schamansky. And, you know, again, I think, you know, I talked to Chief Kozel, and I heard, you know, Mr. Goodspeed, who certainly is familiar with law enforcement, Mr. Ben Sickle. And I don't disagree that they have a compelling argument for that police officer. In particular, since the, I don't oppose to the idea of splitting up the city for blight instead of having a part-time blight officer, having that become part of the police office. I think that it does make a compelling argument for the additional person. But with that said, and understanding the priorities that we're currently going to be facing, I do think that we also have to consider having a hiring freeze, not just for officers, but in any of our categories. I would think that it would be fiscally responsible for the city council to put a hiring freeze on the current positions and/or any vacant positions until the full council gets a chance to look at the economic impact of them. We know we're probably going to be, you know, more than our million dollars in the rear between the loss of revenues and the cost. And just to give you an idea, currently, the police department costs us about 20.3% of our total income. With the addition of another police officer, that's going to be 22% of the total budget we'll be spending on law enforcement. That is about 5% higher by percentage than we were paying, you know, 30 or 40 years ago. Now, I understand you can't buy percentages, but we can't spend money that we can't generate either. And to be honest, with the information that the city manager and our finance director knows, I really think that we should readjust the budget and be more practical. We can't, we can't make a budget on the assumptions that we basically know are going to be woefully short of what we're projecting. And I think that the budget that's been presented to us is really not a workable document. And I think until we really see what the impact of those losses could potentially be, we should postpone doing any additional hiring action in any area of city government.
I totally disagree, Mr. Councilmember Schamansky. With all due respect, I think public safety is a priority that we have to keep in mind since we have such uncertain times. And I would prefer that we take some money out of our well-endowed contingency fund to help offset it. And I realize that it's draining, but I also feel that we need to protect the public. And we need to also help out our officers who are under a great deal of stress and strain right now. Thank you.
Okay, this is Grubowski again. In 1970, when I was working, we had more men working, and I was always told the same thing about the budget. You asked me about that, Nick, when I told you how many men we had back then. We took and worked with the budget, and we got it to work out. Now, what we need to do is maybe buy in a few trucks for a few years so we can manage this budget. Thank you.
This is-
Go ahead, Matt.
Again, I'm not disagreeing on the need for law enforcement. But what I'm saying is that what we currently have as a balanced budget, in reality, is not balanced. And it's going to be a long way from balanced. And we have an obligation to provide for a balanced budget, even with the understanding that we can dip into contingency funds. They're not unlimited.
Well, Grubowski again, I think we all understand the budget, and we understand whatever responsibilities are responsible. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Schamansky, Councilmember Schamansky, I appreciate your comments. It's just that I really, idealistically, I've been in this a few more years. I really think public safety is our number-one priority. We are really missing the mark if we do not have another officer. And I think it's common that we have the city staff take a look at budget, at adjusting the budget for this. Thank you.
I have a question for Thad.
Yes.
Are we in the process of hiring a new police chief?
We have not started that, no, because-
Is there any reason why we haven't started that? Because we knew for-
Yeah, there's a, there's a couple of reasons. I'm, I don't know that, I don't believe that this time is the right time to do a statewide search, given the uncertainties. We might have to go in a different direction instead of looking at replacing with a public safety director. There's just, I don't believe that it's the right time with this coronavirus. I just don't think it's the right time. You can't, you know, you can't conduct interviews as it is right now. And I want to, I want to take a look at other options that we might have available to us to make that-
One more question, Thad.
Sure.
If you do this, and Detective Glass gets to be, should be the chief of police or public safety director, are you going to replace him then?
Well, it depends on which way we go. And I think it's a little bit premature right now. But to get into these kind of discussions, but, you know, if something different is done- we would have to look at realignment and readjustments in our departments.
Okay.
Well, that would mean then that we'd be down two men because we didn't appoint somebody in there.
Well, if we, the council already knows my plan is that I've asked Detective Sergeant Glass to be in charge of the administrative and operational aspects of the police department, with the exception of discipline, which would be my responsibility. I've asked the same of Acting Deputy Fire Chief Mark Cameron. They can still serve in their capacities for a while until we make the final decision.
Mr. Taylor? Mr. Taylor, are you there?
Yes, yes, I didn't hear you.
This is Roger Zelensky. I was wondering if it would be possible to have a budget with a police officer in it to see how it affects us, how it affects other departments, how it affects our general fund or contingency fund. We don't really have a budget with that in there.
Okay, we can certainly do that. You know, I will, you know, just remind council that it's not the issue of hiring an officer as much it is the timing of hiring an officer. We, in my estimation, and as well as Mr. Bradford's estimation, we need, we may need every penny we have in our fund balance to get us through the next six to 18 months. You know, we know we have, we're going to suffer losses in revenue at the state level in a couple of different areas. The other thing that we haven't really talked about is the water's not going down in the lake. And it's going up higher and we're getting high winds. We've noticed additional shoreline erosion west of the First Street boat launch. We don't know what kind of issues we're going to have with that going forward. Now, we do have some remedies for that in that bond that we're going to be talking with council about. But we don't know if that's going to be sufficient because we don't know with any certainty what additional problems we're going to face with shoreline erosion. So we've got a couple of significant costs that we're going to be facing. And we just feel that it's best to keep that fund balance as it is until the picture becomes much clearer.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
When you adjust the budget for the additional police officer, can you also adjust the revenue figures based on the latest information that you received today on what you can anticipate as the loss of revenues? Because again, the budget isn't any good if it's not reflective of the best guess. And right now, you know, I'm pretty sure that you know that your best guess is woefully short of what we're projecting in the budget.
Yes, yeah, we can do that. I mean, we can, based on what we heard yesterday, I mean, we can make, we can put something in there. We're a little farther along than we were at this point last week in terms of getting the curtain pulled back a little bit on what the state is anticipating in terms of revenue loss. I mean, we can take a run at it for council to look at.
Thad, this is, if I could make a comment about that? The reason that administration opted to present the budget the way we did was, one, we were just at the beginning of the coronavirus pandemic and we didn't have any better information. And although we do have some better information, we certainly, I don't feel, have any better information to be able to make reasonable adjustments to the revenue budget. It would be just as, in my view, just as much of an error to do it that way as it would be to say we're going to get all of our revenue. And here's why that is, in my opinion. The reason for that is, is if we say, okay, we're going to experience a 25% reduction in our revenue sharing across the board for the whole of fiscal year '21. That could be reasonable, it might not be reasonable, could be worse, could be less. That's approximately $200,000 in reduction. If you would like us to do that and then still submit to you a balanced budget, or maybe use some fund balance, those level of cuts require headcount reductions, not headcount increases. And we're a little bit hesitant to do that and say we're going to lay people off based on some things that haven't materialized. So we thought the better approach would be keep council fully informed and let's keep going and see where this revenue is actually trending. And if things improve faster, then the cuts may not need to be as deep. If this was something that we could handle by reducing some contributions from the motor pool and cutting some travel and training and maybe reducing some repairs and maintenance and things like that, then that would be one thing. But I'm not convinced that that's going to get us there. I think at some point, it's going to require some headcount discussions. And right now, to do that and put people's jobs on the line seems a little bit premature, in my view.
I have another comment. This is Councilmember Beaton. I think it's really our responsibility to make sure, especially in uncertain times, where we don't know how bad the economy is going to affect more than Michigan, in particular our city. We don't have any way to measure, but maybe past experience tells us that crime may increase. And what's worrying me most of all is, first of all, we voted years ago to increase our millage by half a mil for another police officer. And I think we at least need to establish that headcount. So to me, it's not adding another one. It certainly is just maintaining what we promised our citizens we would do with their money. Thank you.
Anybody else?
This is Finance Director Bradford. I do have one more comment that I'd like to make on the police situation. We did indeed increase the millage back in 2014 for the police department to be able to fund another position. But, you know, the city attorney can weigh in on this. But I don't believe that the state statutes allow for decisions of prior councils to bind future councils. And with that said, I'm not saying that we shouldn't hire another police officer. I'm just saying this council has the ability to decide whether or not that's still what they want to do with those tax dollars or if they want to roll back the millage or whatever they want to do. A couple of the pieces of information that I think it's important that council is aware of. When we went through the arbitration with the two police unions, they were awarded a contract that increased their hours by 5% from 2080 to 2184 a year. So right now, an officer works 84 hours in a two-week pay period rather than 80. That was the arbitrator's ruling. And spread across 12 officers, that's an additional 1,200 hours of police time that the city is paying for. We're paying for those additional hours for them to work, which is more than a half-time of an equivalent. And the cost of that arbitration ruling was about $44,000. So we're spending $44,000 on hours that management didn't feel were necessary to go to that one additional 12-hour day in that two-week pay period. But that's what we have. And so we do have more hours of policing than we had last year because of that arbitration ruling. And it's more than half of a full-time equivalent. I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
And Bradford, this is Lynn Beaton. I appreciate what you said. The problem is, I've been in management myself and I know that you can increase hours and you can give people more money. But at some point, they get too tired, too stressed out, and you really need another person. Thank you.
Anyone else? I have a question for Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Are we maximizing our service agreements with other, like with the county and the tribe? Are they helping us out to kind of take some pressure off our police officers?
Well, I can tell you that I've been absolutely impressed with the response from the Michigan State Police. You know, occasionally, you know, prior to this, I would see a state police car on US 31. Now I'm seeing them on the residential streets on a regular basis. And so I'm really grateful for the state police. I haven't seen the same response out of the sheriff's department or the tribal police. Now, that said, that doesn't mean they're here. But I do know that the state police are here. And my assumption, based on conversations with the public safety director, that both the tribal police department and the sheriff's department said that they would be available to provide backup and support for our department. So that leads me to believe they're doing that.
This is Public Safety Director Kozel. We have had great assistance with our collaborative partners, the Michigan State Police. They have put a couple of troopers into the area since this has hit our department. The county has been there for us and so has the tribe. So we've had some great working relationships with them through this. And if I may, on CFO Bradford's comment, yes, there has been a little, more hours added to the officers, but we've also been short, which has caused myself a lot of overtime within my budget, more for the last two years than we have if you reflect back into 2017 when I first arrived and we had full staff. So you also have to count there has been an amount of overtime because of the staffing shortages also. Thank you.
Mr. Kozel, would the police, would the state police and tribe kind of help? And has it taken any pressure off of our police force?
Well, it's allowed for the time- The biggest thing, Your Honor, is the time period when we have one officer, which we have from 2,311 PM on to 7 AM. And from 7 AM to 11 AM, we always have that additional help there. I think that's the biggest thing is, is if you're looking at the officer safety issue, that's where it really helps, is to have that secondary officer, which we don't have right now. And that is a result of the new schedule, of course, that we have gone to to try to, you know, relieve the stress on our officers and to try to minimize exposure. So they have been there, they have taken calls for us, they have assisted on medicals. It has been a great assistance.
Okay, I'm just curious as to if they were, are they actually taking complaints? Are they actually doing-
Oh, yes.
Okay, so they're actually-
They're helping out, they're helping out. I can tell you that they're there, they're taking complaints. We were out on a complaint last week and there was a BNE that took place. And they went there, responded first. Our officers were able to break free and go over there and wind up taking the complaint, but they were there to be able to start it. But we still have pride in the city. So our officers, Officer Ben Sickle and Officer Goodspeed, went over there to handle the BNE. So they didn't actually, they didn't actually have to cut paper, but they were there first to be able to assist where we weren't going to be able to break free. So it is nice to have those secondary units from the other departments in the county, in the city, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
This is Councilman Cooper. I got a question, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
My question is, okay, the state police are here. I noticed their presence is a lot because they know we're shorthanded because of the coronavirus. But how long can we depend on the state police being here? After all, the state is having the biggest problem than we are with our budget. And, you know, the governor might say, well, hey, we're going to cut back on some of these state police, too. I mean, common sense will tell you that they ain't going to be here like they are now, maybe in a few months.
Your Honor, if I could comment, Your Honor, if I could comment on that?
Yeah, just let me make a quick comment first. The only reason that I asked the question, the only reason I asked the question was to make sure that we were receiving the maximum, the maximum we could get for help for our police officers so they weren't being so stressed out at this particular time with people being off. Go ahead, Mr. Kozel.
Yes, no problem. Just on Mr. Cooper's comment, I can tell you that they have been in communication with me, asking how we're doing, if we still need to have their assistance within the city because they have also been affected here recently with some numbers and having some quarantine issues. So I know that their numbers are starting to get a little bit, you know, affected by that. They still want to be able to help, they still want to be here for us. But I don't know how long it could last. You know, I told them that, you know, we'll take what they can give us. And I don't want to discount the county and the tribe, don't get me wrong. It's just that the tribe put those two, or I'm sorry, MSP put those two units here specifically for the city, which was awesome. But you never know, that could lessen because of the issues they're now having with the quarantines.
Thank you, Mr. Kozel.
Yes.
Anybody else?
I have a couple of follow-up comments, sorry. One of the things I love about living in the city, it's a small city, but everybody gets to know everybody. And it's a comfort to know who your neighbors are and to know who your police officers are, to know who the firemen are. That's a big comfort to most of the people that live here. And one of the advantages of adding another officer is that that officer becomes part of our community. And we get to know him or her. And I think that's a great driver when you talk about police coverage. The other thing that I want to talk about is, if you're going to look at the budget, and I know this is extra work for people, but that's .4622 mil. If you took that out of the budget, how would your budget look today? So if you're going to look at it one way, you should look at it the other way, too. I would rather have safety first and add another officer. Thank you very much.
I have a question. Yeah, I have a question. This is Martin Smoniak. I have a question for Kozel. What is your opinion on adding another officer?
With your process, this is Public Safety Director Kozel. Since we started the budget process, I've been strong on the one state status quo with having 13 officers. Something that I've approached while we've been going through before we started the budget process. I do understand that there is issues out there as far as revenue, as far as deficit and everything. But during our initial budget meetings, I did still make the pitch that I wanted to stay strong with the 13 officers. And I think that would assist us with cutting back on our overtime and also keep strong that officer safety aspect.
Thank you, that says a lot.
Did I answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. I've been trying to talk, but I've been being put on mute. I just wanted, this is Martin Smoniak. I just wanted to echo Beaton's remarks. I was extremely upset with the last meeting as well. I feel strongly that we do need another officer. The safety of our officers is very important and I think that needs to trump if we can afford it or not. We've been promising our citizens for years now that we are going to add an officer. And we need to commit to that and let them know that we hear them. And, yeah, so I'm full support.
Anybody else?
Is this a meeting or a work session?
Work session. So we have another scheduled work session, tentatively scheduled for the 28th. Mr. Taylor, are you going to be able to get a budget together that if we added another police officer, what it would look like? Are you there, Mr. Taylor?
Bradford inhabitants.
Are you there, Mr. Taylor?
I am. I've been getting muted and unmuted anyhow. As soon as this meeting concludes- Um, as soon, as soon as this meeting concludes, I'm going to have a conversation with Mr. Bradford and, and see what's possible for it. So, I mean, we're going to do everything we can to get it done.
Okay, so we're going to have a meeting Tuesday the 28th. Is there anything else the council would like to have staff prepare for them before this meeting?
Um, I actually have something, um, if I'm not muted, because I've been muted. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, this is Jermaine. Um, so I just wanted to bring up the, the youth center. Um, I'm completely against closing that. I don't, I don't understand why, um, when I'm looking at this budget, there couldn't be $13,000 somewhere to keep that open. Like, why can't we move $13,000 off of the $50,000 that the Randalls asked for? Like, just because they asked for it, doesn't mean they automatically get it, right? I don't, I think that closing is a bad idea. It's been there for 30 years, a lot of kids visit. It's basically only, the only thing that these kids have around here, here. And I think that once it closes, you're not going to move it, it's not going to be restructured somewhere else. It's just going to be completely gone, and then they're not going to have anything. So I think that it needs to be looked at, looked at.
Anybody else have any comment on that?
Yeah, I do. Um, I think you could look at all the appropriations and if they're there now, um, maybe reduce the spend on the volume. It's just a thought.
I didn't hear that. Would you say it again, please?
When you take a look, take another look at appropriations and if you need to reduce them, reduce them by, say, 10, 15% across the board. They, they're going to have to understand that you just don't have as many dollars as you can figure out. If we can collect it later on during the year, we can collect it.
Mr. Taylor, you copy that?
I think I did. I think I heard, take a look at appropriations.
Yes.
Yeah, take a look at appropriations, maybe reduce it by 10, 15%. 15% to, you know, across the board, see where you go, that'll give you some more dollars. It's going to, it's going to be tight for everybody, I understand that. But on the other hand, it is what it is. It's going to be a bad year. So if you have money later on this year, you can help them out.
This is, um, Mick, this is Mick Shemansky. Um, I, I agree with, uh, Councilman that, uh, we should try to keep the, the teen center open. I think it does have value, and I, and I really am not comfortable that we have an appropriate plan, uh, in place, uh, that would be a reasonable substitute, not having that facility open.
This is Finance Director Bradford. Um, council members, we're getting a lot of interference. If possible, if you are calling from a phone that you can mute yourself, it would be great if everybody could mute their own phones until they are wanting to speak. That would prevent us from having to temporarily mute, because we can see which phones are causing the interference. And it's really difficult to hear, so if people can mute their own phones, that would be helpful as we continue to use this medium moving forward.
This is Martin Poniac. Um, I'd have to agree. I didn't feel comfortable with the plan set in place if we would close the teen center. I'd feel more comfortable if we actually had discussions with the options and moved forward. Um, I really am concerned of having a place for the youth here. Um, if nothing else, either fund it at a lesser amount, but we do need to make sure that we have a plan for the youth of this community.
Anybody else? Boy, it got awful quiet. Anybody else?
We've all muted.
Okay, um, if, if there's nothing else for the staff to work on, then maybe we'll adjourn the meeting and we'll be back on the 28th?
That sounds good to me.
Very good.
Sounds good to me.
I would, I would encourage council members, including myself, because I'm a council member, um, to, if you have any questions or any concerns or anything you'd like addressed prior to this meeting, please give Mr. Taylor an email, and he can then, um, send that to all of us so we all, we're all on the same page. With that...
Mr. Taylor, would it be possible?
I'm sorry?
I was just going to ask if it would be possible for Mr. Taylor to email us something in advance of what, uh, he and Mr. Bradford are working on as far as an update.
Absolutely, that was, that's the intent, is that, and that's why I'm going to be talking with Mr. Bradford at the, Bradford at the conclusion of this meeting. Um, we would certainly get, get our thoughts to council, uh, at least two days in advance of the meeting.
Awesome, thank you.
Anybody else tonight? Hearing none. Thank you, everybody. Great discussion. See you on the 28th. We're adjourned.
Thank you.